The meeting is now called the order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the May 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. This is a hybrid meeting, so there will be people joining us online. Please raise your hand if you have a comment, if you're joining us from online. The meeting is being recorded, so just so everyone's aware. And with that, let's get started. First up on the agenda is approval of the minutes of April 11th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Supervisors, April 2020, April 11th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment? From the board, public comment, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Next up are the reports. Chief Alexander, you're first.
For the month of April 2022, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 1,069 entries in the Police Department Call Reporting System. During the reporting period, the officers issued 115 traffic citations. They investigated 25 motor vehicle crashes and they arrested 10 individuals. During the reporting period, Sergeant McBride conducted two commercial vehicle inspections during his normal workdays, resulting in seven commercial motor vehicle violations. To date, the officers have documented 4,086 calls for service. They've arrested 45 individuals. They've issued 357 traffic citations, they've written 80 warnings, and they've investigated 123 motor vehicle crashes.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Next up, the Treasurer's report.
Good evening. Through the month of April, in the general fund, we have collected just over 33% of our budgeted revenues and have expended just over 31% of our budgeted expenditures.
Thank you. Public Works, pass in the mic.
Good evening. For the month of April, the daily average flow of the Downingtown Treatment Plant was approximately 1.78 million gallons per day. There were no new sewer connections to either the Dara or the Eagleview wastewater treatment plant. For the month of April, we, the township received 5.44 inches of rains. The normal for this time of year would be about 3.8 inches, so we're about 1.1 inches over for the year at this point. The department responded to 140 K1 calls for the month, and performed preventative maintenance in accordance with the sanitary sewer maintenance program. The department placed a safety fence around a portion of the Euclid Trail near Jones Pond Park, and that was damaged by Ida last fall. I did want to announce that that is closed temporarily while we do those repairs. We hope to have it open by the end of the week, hopefully Wednesday, weather permitting. The department replaced stormwater pipe at the intersection of Peck and Norwood Roads, and cleaned catch spaces and performed general pipe cleaning on Hickory, Birch, Lyndale Station Road, Fairweather, Berkeley, Woodland, Livingston, and Burdette.
Great, thank you. Fire Marshal?
For the month of April, the department issued 112 permits for construction activities. A total of 127 inspections were conducted, 73 use and occupancy certificates were issued. Fire Marshal responded to 14 incidents, as well as two open burning complaints, and had one fire investigation.
Okay, great, thank you. Mya of a fire company?
Yes, for the month of April, the fire department responded to 41 incidents. Of those incidents, three were in Upper Euclid, 25 in Euclid, two in West Peckham, and 11 in other townships for a year to date total of 177.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the Euclid ambulance company here tonight? No. All right, can I get a motion to approve the reports?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I do have a comment, just to piggyback onto the police report. I've received a significant amount of outreach from the community regarding traffic concerns, specifically involving the Devon Drive and the 113 corridor. I know today we had an incident there involving a school bus that people were concerned about, and I just wanted to share that the township is proactively working with the school district to address the traffic safety concerns there. There have been several meetings to this point, and there was fairly involved update on the last Downingtown area school district school board meeting last week. If anyone was interested in the update of the east campus and how they might be making some traffic improvements there. And we do have an upcoming meeting with the school district this week to continue that conversation. So I wanted to make sure that the community was aware of the progress that we are wait, that we have been making with that, and is aware that we hear the concerns that have been brought to us about that. I don't know if the chief had anything else he wanted to share.
Yeah, I would just mention that the crash from this afternoon occurred around 2:30. There was a smaller bus, I'd say about 60 or 20 people capacity, one student at a time, traveling south down Route 113, the driver attempted to make a left-hand turn into the once again drive, and was struck by an oncoming vehicle that was coming through the intersection. That particular crash is still under investigation, however, nobody was injured. For anybody that may have been in the area or drove by that at the time, the crash didn't apparently look quite serious. The passenger vehicle sustained heavy damage, as did the bus, but everybody.
Thank you. Any more board comment? Public comment or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, opposed, nobody, right? Wait, we did?
Did we?
Yeah, we did, sorry. There was some confusion last time, so I'm just gonna say it right now, not that you're confused, Bill, but the public that we follow, the procedure we follow, the Roberts Rules of Order, we make a motion, and then if it's seconded, then there's board comment, and then public comment, and then we vote, just so everybody knows, anyway. Onto the business. The first thing on the agenda is the permission to advertise North Milford Road culvert replacement.
Right, so, you know, earlier I'd mentioned Ida damage, I feel like we're almost a year into Ida and we're continuing to deal with the damage, but the North Milford Road Bridge slash culvert had washed out during that event in September. We did put a temporary fix in that's been holding just fine, but we're looking to do a permanent fix, and part of that is, includes a 24 linear foot, 12-foot span by eight-foot rise concrete structure, and what we're asking the board for this evening is permission to advertise that bid, so we can start getting pricing on that.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve the advertisement of the North Milford Road culvert replacement? Um, as soon, as soon as we make a motion, then I'll ask for public comment, just hold it, hold your thought, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any comment from the board?
No.
Any public comment regarding them advertising the Milford Road culvert bid? Sure, yeah, come on up and, yeah, that way people online can hear you, and if you could just state your name.
Yes, I'm Peg McCoury, 901 Wellshares Way.
Okay.
I have been, this road, it's close to my neighborhood. They closed it years ago. And since that time, that area of Euclid Township has been built immensely. And it's nice that that neighborhood has, on Milford, has that quiet road, but I think we need that road now in that area. I'm asking that when you consider your culvert, that it will maintain enough room to put your fire trucks, your ambulances, your police, any other thing that has to go over there, because that was the reason why it was closed. The fire ambulance, they come down, down and forge, just like most of the traffic, because that's closed right now. This would alleviate a lot of traffic heading down Dallin Forge, making that ugly horseshoe turn onto Wellshares, into Kinston and Penny Packer. And we also now, we also now have three walking paths that cars have to go around there. The Euclid Trail, Dallin Forge and Kinston, Penny Packer and Kinston, and then there's one in the middle. So if that road could go one way from Dallin Forge down to Rice and Eagleview, that would alleviate all that traffic that is going that way. And it would just head right in down where there's hardly any traffic. It cannot handle a two-way, but a one-way, and that way we can open that up again on Dallin Forge and have whatever to, to, you know, turn the traffic down to Milford. There's a four-way stop at that intersection, which is wonderful. There's no, there's one walkway that takes you from Penny Packer to Rice. But traffic has changed immensely in that area since they closed that road. And I understand it's a, it's a small road to handle the traffic that was coming, but now that the culvert is in the picture here, I'm suggesting we get a bridge that can handle emergency vehicles, that can handle traffic, and we can send some of that traffic going towards that end of Euclid Township and also Upper Euclid, past Shimonah Creek. I just think I've been asking for this forever, maybe 20 years, but now it's like the time you're talking about this. And I'd like us to really think about it, it could alleviate a lot of problems on Dallin Forge.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't catch, do you live on Dallin Forge?
No, I live in Wellshares.
Oh, in Wellshares, okay, so not on Milford.
Yeah, no, 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 not on Milford.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you for your comment, yep. Does the fire company, or does anyone want to make a comment about why that's closed, or why we're? The, I mean, the, the bridge will hold emergency vehicles, for sure.
Right, that, that road does service residential properties, and I believe the previous bridge was rated for a fire truck and an ambulance, and I believe we did that for the temporary fix as well. Basically, in the event of an emergency, we need to make sure that emergency vehicles can get there. But the new culvert will be even stronger than that, so it would be able to support the, the weight of a trap, a fire truck, ambulance, any emergency vehicle. We shouldn't say any, but most rational emergency vehicles that we would need to send over that bridge.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you for your comment. Um, is there any other public comment about the Milford Road culvert bid? With that, we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes. Next up on the agenda is the appointment to the Planning Commission. We recently received notice from one of our Planning Commission members, Tim Booker, who had been on the commission for many years, that he was going to step down due to scheduling changes for him personally. So we need to appoint someone. One, we have two ex officio members on that commission right now, and we'd like to move someone up into a voting position to take Tim Booker's spot, and so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lindsay LaBresco as the voting member on the Planning Commission. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any comment from the board? Or from the public, public comment about appointing Lindsay LaBresco as voting member to the Planning Commission? Uh, then we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes. I just want to say thanks to Tim Booker for his years of service on the Planning Commission. It's monthly meetings, and they do a lot of, you know, paperwork and stuff, reading up on all the projects that come in front of them, so it is a time-consuming volunteer position, and I appreciate his many years of service to the township in that way. Um, next up on the agenda is the Hankin Group, Lot 24, request for extension of time to complete construction.
Yes, I received a letter from Nick Hartman on behalf of the Hankin Group requesting the five-year extension, which expires this December, to extend to December 30th, 2027. The request is for the Planned Life Care Facility at the corner of Race and Stockton. They had gone through the conditional use approval back in 2016, which ultimately, in their decision, gave them an extension from the 12 months that's in our zoning ordinance to 24 months. The conditional use decision said that they can request additional time if necessary. With COVID, it slowed down the completion of their Phase 1 and the construction of Lot, Phase 2 and 3. So that's what their request is for tonight.
Okay. Is there a motion to grant the Hankin Group's request for extension of time to complete construction of Lot 24?
So moved.
A second.
Any comment from the board? Any public comment? All in favor? Opposed, aye, whoopsie, I always forget to vote. Motion passes, thank you. Permission to advertise the following ordinances.
Yes, so at the Planning Commission meeting last week, we, they had discussed the proposed ordinances for the amendment to the Town Center, the amendment to the lighting ordinance, the amendment to the landscaping ordinance, as well as the chicken ordinance. The Planning Commission did recommend the Town Center, the lighting, and the landscaping. We're reviewing a few comments that were addressed pertaining to the chicken ordinance. They'll go back to the Planning Commission in June. All of the ordinances are on our website, but we're looking to advertise for hearing June 13th at the board meeting.
Okay. Um, so I can make a motion to advertise all of the ordinances at the same time, right? So is there a motion to approve the advertisement of or, of ordinance number 2022-02, 2022-03, 2022-04, and 2022-05?
Just, just to be clear, that's the 2022-02 is the amendment to the Town Center. Ordinance 2022-03 is the amendment to the lighting ordinance. Ordinance 2022-04 is the amendment to the landscaping ordinance. And ordinance 2022-05 would be the chicken ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second, or is there a motion to, as stated?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any comment from the board on advertising any of these ordinances?
No.
Any com, oh sure, go ahead.
Move on without me. No, I just wanted to thank the staff and our commissions that put a lot of work into reviewing these, I'm really excited to see some of these moving forward, and I think that they're going to make some meaningful improvements to some of our ordinances, especially relating to our landscaping with our new consulting, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comment? Any comment from the public or questions? Hi Kathy.
Hi. Hi Kathy Sotak, Euclid Township, and yes, in regards to the chicken ordinance, I wanted to just say thank you to Tara, thank you to the staff, and also thank you to all of you for moving this forward. I think it was actually two years ago in May, Mr. Miller, where you kindly had taken some time out of your day where we talked about, you know, the history of the backyard chicken ordinance and how, what is the process for moving that forward? And part of that process, as you had shared, was to talk to Tara and also get residents backing, and so we proceeded with getting hundreds of signatures during COVID, and really happy to see this moving forward in a, in a positive manner. So there are a couple of pieces of the ordinance that I just want to state for public that I think are still a little strict, and so we did, as part of the submission and recommendation to the township and to all of you, we did have a white paper of assessing the backyard chicken ordinances from the top 100 US cities. And when you really think about it, lot size is irrelevant, because all that really matters is distance from neighboring home, dwelling homes where people live. So the, the recommendation for, from the white paper is 25 feet from a neighbor's dwelling, and I think the ordinance that is drafted is stated at 75 feet. So I wanted to just encourage all of you that, that will still inhibit some residents from having chickens. And again, that, you know, if I can have chickens in Minneapolis and Atlanta and New York and Dallas and all these other top cities within 25 feet, it just seems like something to look at. So, but anyway, I just wanted to say thank you again for all of the hard work and just, again, for taking, being a board that takes action so that it's not another seven years that we're talking about chicken ordinances.
Only two.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, appreciate your legwork on this Kathy, too. And also thanking Tara for working on this ordinance for the past five, six, how many years, I don't know. It's been a while. I think that what we have, the draft we have now is a very good compromise, you know, it was very outdated, it was four acres. So we're trying to update it and, you know, find some middle ground here with the people on both sides of the issue, so that's the draft that we're putting forward.
Hi, good evening, my name's Gina Murray, Euclid Township, Denver Way. So I want to comment on the chicken ordinance as well, I'm definitely entering this conversation late in the game, so I may say things that have already been said, but I do want to speak on behalf of those of us who are under a half an acre. And, ooh, I did take some note, write some notes so I don't get off track, but I am just under a half an acre. My neighborhood is mainly made up of properties with .48, .49 acres, as, as is the neighborhood next door, the one across the street, the one around the way. So there's a lot of people in Euclid Township that are sitting under a half an acre, and so I want to speak on their behalf and my behalf, because we would like to be included in the ability to have backyard chickens. So I'm definitely interested in what data the township is using to support the 75 feet, the half an acre and up. Even with a half an acre, I'm just about there. 75 feet from neighbor dwellings puts me at like negative amount of space to put a coop. So it's, it almost zeros out half-acre properties, unless your property is sitting in a very specific way on your land. So I do definitely support what Kathy spoke about. Maybe taking a look at that white paper again, because an ordinance that talks about distance from neighbor dwelling that is around that 25 feet that's suggested in best practices would allow for more people to be included in the opportunity. I talked at the Planning Commission last week about, you know, in light of current times and the food shortages that we're all being warned are coming. I know for me, I'm concerned about food insecurity in the coming months. I'm a mother of four, so I've got a lot, and they're all boys, so I've got a lot of mouths to feed. So it'd be really helpful if I had those extra eggs and I just knew that I could start stocking them up so that I have, I have that for them. Because it definitely, this time with the what's going on right now in the world, it does give you a lot, at least for me, a lot of anxiety thinking about what could be coming. And I know that would make me feel a lot better. And so I'm sure a lot of other residents would, would love to have that peace of mind as well. So hopefully you'll take that data into consideration when making your decision, and if you plan to, or hopefully one of you will push for some changes. Aside from that, I just, I just do have, and I'm sure others would agree with me, I have a hard time with the idea that a neighbor can have four dogs and three cats that bark at 5:00 AM, which my neighbor's dog does bark at 5:00 AM, and cats that are crying late at night, waking up people, making messes on lawns that may or may not be, be picked up with no interference from the township. So the only time township would step in is if a neighbor complained, which rightly so. Because we're adults, we pay our mortgages, we pay our taxes, we should be able to have pets and animals on our property as long as we're being responsible for them. So I don't really see how chickens are any different, in fact, the white paper that Kathy referred to talks a little bit about how the clucking of hens is commonly compared to human conversation as both register at 65 decibels, while a single dog can reach over 100 decibels. So they're really not as much of a nuisance as they, people may think they could be. So, so just, I would just encourage you to kind of think about the little people on under half an acre, because we want to be included too. And so I appreciate your time.
Thank you, we appreciate your.
Madam Chairwoman, it might be helpful just to explain, and you're not really late in the process, because this is what, what we're doing tonight is just a permission to advertise. Yeah, so, so, but it's, I think it might be helpful to, so what will happen is it'll be advertised. I think the plan is to raise it at the, the June 13th meeting. Once it's advertised, until it's passed, it could still be changed. The only caveat on that is if there's a substantive change to the ordinance, it would need to be re-advertised again, and the date would get pushed back, which is fine. And then, of course, obviously, once you have the structure in place, down the road, it could also be changed. I mean, there's nothing that says an ordinance can't be changed, so that, that's sort of the process that we're looking at.
Thank you, we appreciate the comments.
We have a raised hand in the lobby.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can't.
I can.
Well.
Can you hear me?
We're just working on the volume, I think.
No, it started 23 minutes ago.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Holly Christian, I also live in Wellshares. I have a question about the, you said that it has to be advertised, and you were going to do that in June. How exactly is that advertised? For the ordinances.
We, we would, the ordinances are advertised in the Daily Local, they're also available on our website.
Okay. And is that something that you're able to share on, like, platforms?
Yes, it's a linkable document on our website.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's being, we'll, we're given, we can grant permission to advertise today, and the hearing will be June 13th. It'll be advertised between.
We'll advertise it after this meeting, and it'll be on the agenda for June.
Yeah.
Right, the, the advertisement will occur sometime between now and June 13th, I think it has to be a week or seven days before. And what the statute requires is a newspaper. What is, the statute requires is a newspaper, but I know the township also puts it up on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do you, do you want to? I'm sorry.
It'll be on the Planning Commission agenda for discussion at their June meeting, and then the hearing would be held at the board meeting June 13th. So you have two opportunities to come speak.
And the Planning Commission's on June 1st, right?
The first Wednesday of June.
Yeah, June 1st. So lots of opportunities to come and talk about chickens some more. Uh, is there any other public comment? Yeah, come on up.
Howdy folks, Joe Muckel, 456 Cheshire Drive, Downingtown. I want to echo a lot of what Kathy and Gina said, so just kind of like the exclamation point on there, and thanks Tara for all the work you've done with us again. I want to also represent also those half-acre people, under half an acre. Got some friends in our neighborhood who couldn't be here tonight, but just wanted to elevate their voice, I think also .44. So they're, they're, they're close, would love to see them included in the possibility of this. Obviously, to your point, things can get changed moving forward, but, you know, government sometimes takes a little while, so to be able to get off from the onset, get it included, that'd be awesome. Also, just as, on the record, we've had issues with wolves in our neighborhood for years that took a long while to get resolved. And just to know that that has taken so long, and there have been challenges with that, just ownership of wolves.
Really?
And they're also being now chickens as a possibility, like just some of that discrepancy and, and challenge, like it's, it's hard as a resident of Euclid Township to be like, oh, been wolves living in my township for, in my neighborhood for years. It's just tough to, to swallow and, and to fathom, so just like being able to balance that out and, and being able to just promote freedom. Again, I said this at the Planning Commission meeting, just caution against overregulation and overreach, because I think we're all freedom-loving people, we love our chickens, of the supplement for our family. Single-family income for myself, my wife sits at home with the kids. Would love to be able to find unique and creative ways to provide, so thank you.
I know all about government overreach. Um, thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? In that case, we will put up for a vote. The motion to advertise all these ordinances has been moved and seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion passes. That is it for items on the agenda. Um, that is it for items on the agenda. I'm going to run through the announcements really quick and then we'll open up the meeting to public comment and questions. This Wednesday morning, May 11th, we're going to have yoga in the park right here at Baird Park at 9:30 AM. This is a new um, initiative that we're doing. And it will be held every Wednesday morning at 9:30 here at Baird Park throughout the summer. Um, I want to thank Lauren Alexandro for offering her uh, teaching expertise. She's a certified yoga instructor. So she'll be leading the classes and just bring a yoga mat. The classes are free, so feel free to pop by and attend. Um, also on the announcements, May 12th, we'll have a historical commission meeting at 7:30 PM at the Cadwalader House. All of these meetings are open to the public, by the way. Uh, Community Day will meet on the 17th at 7:00 PM here. Uh, also on the 17th is primary day, so our township offices will close at noon because this is a voting place. On the 19th, the Environmental Advisory Council will meet here at 7:00 PM. Uh, the 30th of May, we'll observe Memorial Day and the township, township offices will be closed. On June 1st, the Planning Commission will meet to talk about chickens again at 7:30 PM. On June 13th, we'll meet here again for the Board of Supervisors meeting at 7:30 PM. And that is when we'll have all the hearings for those ordinances we just advertised.
Yes. On June 4th, I'm sorry, I just realized it wasn't on, on June 4th, uh, the Environmental Advisory Council will be hosting a open house here at the Township Building outside uh, in honor of Native Plant Week. And so there's going to be a lot of awareness and educational events available onsite as well as um, native plant giveaways. So make sure to mark your calendar for that one.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be super fun. Thanks to the AAC for putting that together. Thank you Laura. Um, with that, I'm going to open up the meeting to public, the public for any questions or comments on general, of general nature that haven't been discussed so far.
I'm Mark Yorgi 372 Harshaw. I echo what they say about the chickens. I say chickens for all. Um, my main concern is, it's really not a concern, just my kids are really complaining about it. Uh, the playground at the Forgotten Park, like I call it the Forgotten Playground.
Um, what road is that on?
It's off of, it's the opposite side of the Shimona Creek Park that has like the really nice playground.
Of the, of the Peck, Peck Road?
That playground is horrible. Um, like it doesn't have swings. It's got like two slides. And it's just not a very good, like if you have kids playing at that baseball field and they want to say, hey, can I go down to the park? I mean, it's like way far away from the baseball fields. And it's like you blink and you're done with the, the playground equipment. Um, I know budgets and all of that kind of stuff, but is there a way to consider maybe at least putting a swing set in? So like kids can swing other than just going down one slide and having like wood things when they fall, they could get splinters on and whatnot. I mean, it happened. It's no big deal. Kids are kids. But um, it would be nice to see if we could modernize that, that park a little bit because my kids will be playing baseball there for like ever and a day. And that's all.
Okay, yeah, we do have a schedule for when we-
Oddly enough, that will be one of the next ones on there. We had a little bit of an issue during COVID with procuring some of the playground equipment. But um, Lineville Park and Peck Road or Shimona Peck are the next two parks to receive new equipment. So.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Um, is, is there any other public comment? Yes, you want to come up please?
Good evening. My name's Jenna Persick. I'm here on behalf of the Chester County Library and the Henrietta Hankin Branch in Chester Springs. My work address is 450 Exton Square Parkway. Um, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit to let you know that um, 40% of Euclid Township residents have cards with the Chester County Library system. And of that, uh, 84% prefer to use the Chester County Library and the Henrietta Hankin Branch. So we're really happy about that. Um, and I just want to talk to you a little bit about some of our summer reading programs. Um, we have a children's summer reading program. Everyone knows that. So all the people that like the parks, please come in. Use the um, the children's uh, programs and those are all going to be in-person this year. We're going back to in-person for those programs. We also have an adult summer reading program, so it's not just for children anymore. We also have a teen program as well. Um, the adult um, summer reading program has been gamified to make it easy to get tokens and um, get badges and win gift baskets depending on how much you read. So there's some incentives there. And I have some information to give you about that. And then finally, I just want to talk about our museum pass program. We offer a number of museum passes that are free for our patrons to use. Um, and that saved Chester County Library card holders $116,000 last year. Um, and that was COVID when not a lot of the museums were open. So um, that is definitely um, a service that we provide to residents of all Chester County. And just wanted to talk a little bit about that to you um, tonight. So thanks for listening. Um, and I hope you all come out to the library soon.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we love the library. I'm a big fan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My kids love your reading programs.
Yes. Now you can join too.
Is there any other public comment? Yep.
My name's Rob Fullerton. I live at 209 Endeavour Drive. Um, we're having a problem with neighbors draining their pool into our yard.
Hmm.
Not sure where to take this to or what to do, but we've called the township and I've got videos of the pool draining from the pool into my yard and causing flooding. If you want to see the video, I have it. I took it today.
Did we?
You can send it to me or I'll make, um, Tara.
Okay. You want to just come to?
But you can give me a call tomorrow if you need help.
I mean, yeah, I think, I think you've done it before and I don't-
Um.
Flooding into my-
Yeah.
Unit and things like that.
So what's the process if we've already sent a letter to a neighbor and they don't comply?
Can I just show you the video at least?
Yeah, sure. And I've seen, I've seen, I've seen these before also, but um, and it's best to go through Tara, but-
This is, this is where it comes out of the pool. You can see the water coming out.
Yeah.
It goes to my yard in a second.
So just for anyone out there listening, uh, we, we get these a lot right now. It's like pool draining season. You have to drain water onto your own property or into the street?
Like that's kind of like a little bit of water.
Your property.
That's your house?
That's, that's my house, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of water.
You can't force water onto your neighbors, correctly.
So, okay, yeah, thanks. No, I appreciate. Yeah, I know. I hear you. Okay.
We're going over a while on the-
Yeah.
I know it's just water, but it's-
No, it's, uh, water is the enemy. I know what you're talking about. I hear you. I thank you for coming out and um, Tara will reach out to your neighbor again. So just so everybody knows, the water, try and keep the water on your own yard, in your own yard. Make all your neighbors happy. Plant a lot of native plants and trees that'll soak up all the water beautifully. Um, and everyone will be happy. Uh, is there any other public comment? Oh gosh. We have a little active crowd tonight.
So um, I'm Mark Yorgi 372 Harshaw. Um, and I don't know who in the, the township to reach out to. I have a, a culvert, I guess you should say, that's connected from my yard to a retention basin that's like way down.
Culvert?
And there's a, there's a, a pipe, like a PVC pipe that's flooding my yard. That's coming directly from the retention basin. But I don't know if, I don't know if that's really the case. But I, I, I mean, I just bought the house, so I, I don't have plans to know like what goes where. I mean, we just did it by putting a snake up it and we could see where it went into the, the culvert. But there's also a big, there's also like a big, like, like a big PVC pipe that goes, that leads down to the-
Okay, yeah, we have, we have maps of all that stuff.
Okay. Because I'm just, I'm just curious, because I, it's filled with leaves, so I know I need to empty it. But I, it's flooding my yard, but I don't know if it's the overflow or what.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks Tara. We have lots of emails tomorrow. Um, is there any other public comment? Before we adjourn? Nope. Okay, then can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you.